This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome to the May 18th South Whitehall Township Planning Commission meeting. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the 25th and 6th Republican Party. Nation, we are visible, ready and tested.
Mr. Adams, would you like to do the roll call?
Yes. Trevor Dombach.
Here.
Tim Dugan.
Here.
Andrew Flag.
Here.
Brian Height.
Here.
Diane Kelly.
Here.
Mark Luth.
Here.
Dave Wilson.
Here.
Seven present, sufficient for a quorum.
I'd also like to make note of township staff and subconsultants present. We have Greg Adams, Planner, Dave Manhart, Director of Community Development, Laura Harrier, Zoning Officer, Joe Zader, Township Solicitor, and Leo DeVito. Getting my names mixed up. And Keystone Consulting Engineers.
Dave Teddermer.
Dave Teddermer. Great. Meeting rules.
For an orderly meeting wherein all attendees may be able to fully participate, we ask that you adhere to the following rules. Please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid background noise that may cause interference in the meeting and make it difficult for others to hear. Staff may mute the microphones of remote attendees if needed. Public questions and comments will be taken at periodic intervals throughout the agenda. We will start with no time limits, but the Planning Commission Chairman may impose a time limitation if there are many questions or if the meeting is running short on time. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and then move to the podium when directed and state your name, address, and your comment or question. Please turn the podium microphone on before speaking and off when done. For remote attendees, the chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address in the chat box. When you are recognized and so directed, please unmute your microphone and state your comment or question. Mute your microphone when done. For those accessing the meeting by phone only, staff will periodically ask for caller comments and unmute any callers. Callers must identify their name and address prior to making a comment. Your cooperation and adherence to these rules will ensure an orderly and respectful meeting. Thank you.
All right, we're on Agenda Item Number Three, Review and Approval of the April 20th Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. Does anyone have any comments?
I have no comments. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call vote. Trevor Dombach.
Abstain, I was not at the last meeting.
Tim Dugan.
Aye.
Andrew Flag.
I'll abstain as well, I was not present.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Diane Kelly.
Aye.
Mark Luth.
Aye.
David Wilson.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero with two abstentions.
All right, we're on Agenda Item Four, Subdivision Review, Part A, Blue Barn Road Subdivision. And before we get into the staff presentation, I just want everyone to know this is a sketch plan. It's not an official preliminary or final land development submission, so the purpose of a sketch plan is we provide feedback and input. We don't make any votes, we don't make any binding decisions or recommendations tonight. So just want to make sure everyone in the audience understands that.
This is an application to further develop the following properties. Tract One, the 10.58 acre park property, pin number 5477-0212-2303, on the west side of Blue Barn Road, north of Clauser Road, zoned RR Rural Residential. Tract Two, the 43.44 acre property located at 5123 Chapman's Road, zoned RR Rural Residential. Tract Three, the 1.1 acre property, pin number 5477-0102-8357, at the northwest corner of Chapman's Road and Blue Barn Road, zoned RR Rural Residential. Tract Four, the 9.6 acre property, pin number 5467-9086-1069, at the southwest corner of the Chapman's Road and Blue Barn Road intersection, zoned RR Rural Residential and R5 Medium Density Residential. And Tract Five, the 25.095 acre property, pin number 5477-0087-9525, at the southeast corner of the Blue Barn Road and Chapman's Road intersection, zoned R4 Medium Density Residential. The plan proposes to subdivide the following. Tract One into five lots between 1.02 and 2.59 acres in size. Tract Two into 17 lots between 1.0 and 4.32 acres in size, a 14.91 acre open space and 2,122 linear feet of new road. Tract Three, no change proposed. Tract Four into 11 lots between .23 and 1.68 acres in size, a .94 acre open space and 450 linear feet of new road. And Tract Five into 45 lots of at least 9,600 square feet in size, 4.27 acres of open space, 3,323 linear feet of new road, and stormwater management areas. David Jandal is the owner, Jandal Land Company is the applicant. I do want to make a correction to our previous township consideration. This plan did not appear at the October 15th, 2020 Planning Commission, it was withdrawn at the last moment. And this is a sketch plan, so the department recommends that the applicant utilize the comments from the reviewing agencies and those of the Planning Commission to assist in the preparation of the preliminary plans. Deadline dates to act on the plan are not applicable to this plan. Thank you.
Great. The applicant may state your name and provide your presentation.
Okay. Charlie, you next with Hanover Engineering. Better now? So Greg pretty much described the whole project, so I'm pretty much done, so, no. Anyways, do I have to keep holding this? No, okay. So the project, I'm going to go through it. If I'm boring anybody, let me know. And the, which screen do you want to, this probably doesn't work on the screen. So are you familiar with the Blue Barn Road and Chapman's Road intersection? So as Greg described, it's all four, it's basically the four corners of that, southeast, southwest, northeast, and northwest, properties. There are some miscellaneous lots in there owned by others, but it's the way I'll explain it, in those quadrants. What we're proposing is to stick with by right zoning. So as Greg mentioned, with the lot acreages, they are by right. The southeast is 9,600 or larger, the northeast and northwest, both are rural residential, so they're one acre or larger. Southwest is actually split between rural residential and R5. So currently, the way it's drawn is a cul-de-sac with smaller lots on one side in the R5, larger lots on the other side in the rural residential. We are aware that there's, the alignment of the intersection of Blue Barn and Chapman's is not ideal, there's an offset in it, as you drive across on Blue Barn, if you're on Chapman's. And we are proposing to realign Chapman's so that it's a straight shot through. It's not being proposed to be at a 90-degree intersection, but it's a four-way stop and we'll have proper site distance in all directions, what we propose at that intersection. Chapman Road is basically the line for the Act 537 sewer district. So at this point, everything north of Chapman's Road is proposed on-lot sewer, everything south is proposed public sewer. And there was a comment in one of these letters, I think it was, I don't know, in one of these about searing the whole project, we would gladly sewer the north side, but it would have to be accepted, the 537 update, and extend sewer, that sewer district up to the north of the, at least up through those properties. So this is the first time I'm presenting to this board in many years, so if I'm going in the wrong direction, or you have questions, or you want to stop me, or whatever, just please let me know, I'm just going on with telling you what I think you might want to know, and we'll take questions whenever you'd like. So anyway, there's a, the upper right corner, there's a hatched area, which is a larger, it's a wetland area, and we would be preserving, there's wetlands on that area and down on the southeast corner, and we would be preserving the wetlands and having proper storm drainage and addressing NPDS permits and everything that goes with that. The, currently, some of the questions or concerns with the project, and may I, if I walk to there, will you hear me?
No.
Oh, I think you could take it with you, though.
I just want to... Oh, okay, got you. So I just want to point to, you might as well stay there, it's the intersection, I don't want to discuss the locations of the intersections we're proposing. So if you're up on Chapman's, just east of the, right in there, so to the lower left of the pointer is a big wetland area, and it prohibits us from having any roadway to the right, basically, through those wetlands. And so what we're proposing is the roadway for that southern southeastern tract to come out at that location. Now, I know by ordinance, it states that there's supposed to be 800 feet, I believe, between intersections, and that one, I think, is about 480 or some, in the 400 area. That is why that is being proposed there. Let me stay on that lot and come down around the corner, down from the intersection of Blue Barn and Chapman's, but on Blue Barn, that intersection right there, that one is shown at that location, because that's about as far as we can get to the south and without leaving our property on Blue Barn. There has been discussions, and I know there's been some discussions preliminary with the neighboring development to try to combine the two, and so there's one entrance out on Blue Barn rather than one for this site and one for the neighboring site. I can tell you that those discussions, that they're not, that they're not moving forward, but they have not moved to a location that I can say which property is going to be proposed to have the road. Ideally, per your ordinance, it would be best to move it to the south further, and we understand that, and we are working on that, and I'm assuming by the time we come in with preliminary plan, we would have a lot more information. So over on the northeast corner, the first road, we talked about that intersection, that we designed, or we showed that intersection to create a full intersection with the road to the south, and that's why that's, we didn't push that one further to the east to try to get more separation from the Blue Barn and Chapman's Road. So they both end up having not adequate distance by ordinance, but we have it as a regular four-way intersection, and it is in excess of 400 feet from Blue Barn and Chapman's, which is a four-way stop intersection. It's not like people are coming through that at a high speeds and will be on that intersection before you know it.
So...
Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine.
My main concern when I saw that was that new intersection, just east of Blue Barn Road.
Yeah, so, go ahead.
My concern is it's not going to meet the warrants for a four-way stop, which...
Probably, probably will not.
It won't, I'm pretty sure. And you also have the open space there, which is pretty grown right now.
Yeah, it's all, it's pretty much all wetland.
Right. So I'm concerned about the site distance, not so much for the vehicles, but for any pedestrian trying to cross that road at that point. And having residences on both sides, there's, the indication is somebody's going to want to try to cross there. And the speeds on that road, and I live just east of this project, the speeds on that road, even coming out the road I live on, in Eck Road, they're doing way more than 40 miles an hour, so, just, it's, it's a highway, basically. So that's my number one concern. I have other concerns, but I think that needs to be really vetted out, and I'm sure PennDOT's going to have a lot to say about that, because it's a state route, so.
Yes, understood with PennDOT, if we do any improvements to the main intersection, that all needs, any improvements that you might see in the, I'll call it purple, but pink, those roadway improvements, that's all going to need PennDOT approval and review.
So that intersection, I guess, is it needed? I'm thinking public safety, that's why we have two, a road onto Blue Barn and a road on Chapman's, but...
Can I continue, Dave?
What?
Let me just continue, so if you, I'll just show, if you go to the right, hold on, to the south, southernmost point of that lot, there's another entrance we're proposing to connect to the road that's in the Pasaco Development, or Kay's building it now, I think.
The former horse farm that was here.
So the, there is a gap, there's a piece of property there owned by the Pasaco Brothers. So the staff has mentioned on any time we've discussed, is they'd like that accessway through that piece from where the Pasacos are building now, or Kay, I think, is building the buildings, through that piece to the south of us and then into our site. So Dave, if we do not have the intersection on Chapman, and we move, and we have that one on the lower right corner, the only other intersection we'd have is probably on the lower east corner, or, I'm sorry, the lower left corner, either on right there or down on the Pasaco property. It's sort of, it has two entrances, we would, personally, I would prefer not, only for access and sending everybody down the south and then out, and/or any deliveries or anything that come to there have to come up through that development and up into there, but that's something that, you know, the roads are not by ordinance at 800 foot off that intersection. So we would have to try to work on that and come to something, some agreement. I think the intersection all the way to the north, if you can pan this down a little bit, the intersection between the Clauser and that one is a little under 800 also, but we, site distance, it works there. As we move further north, the site distance gets worse, and also, we are trying to have decent-sized lots along the north side of that. Again, it's, I think it's over 700 and some feet there, they'd be asking for a week. There was one comment about possibly moving or extending High Vista Drive through the upper west site, northwest site. The slope coming down from where the pointer is now down to Blue Barn Road, there's sections in there that are over 16% slope.
And to... I'm on the master board there, and I know a lot of the people that, it's a private road, people that live there, their kids are playing out there, I don't think they're going to want it to be a through street. That's based on the people that live there, on my understanding, so I'm just saying.
Yeah, we're not proposing that, and the reason is, we'd have to put a long winding road down through that site, and it's one, it's zoned for one acre lots, you can't put in smaller lots to fit in between the roads, so that's, this is where this layout came from. There'd be nice lots, they're a little steeper, but when you start putting in a house, it can, but for...
While we're talking about those lots, I'm sure you're aware, there's a lot of stormwater issues on Blue Barn from that slope, so you're really going to have to address that, because a lot of that stuff gets washed down, all the way down towards Gramm's Road there, so.
Well, yeah, we can work on all of that. You see, generally, you see where the wetlands are, and so, and that's pretty much the low valley going up. We will work at getting that, getting it controlled and ultimately discharging towards that valley.
I will say, this is a great opportunity, because I live right around there. There's, like Brian's saying, that intersection gets some areas that gets flooded out, and the roads are narrow, so I think this is a great opportunity to, you know, fix some problems there.
I mean, the staff has, there are points of that, and you drive through it and you can see.
That's a township road at that segment. The township rolls north of Chapman's.
And David and Greg, let me ask you about the 537, are we sure it does not include the area to the north?
So the 1995 plan encompasses like that whole corner, but then it was further broken out, and I can't, couldn't remember, but I think it was the Chapman's Road line was for the, to be served, and then I think they had future for above that. But we have to go back and look at that 95. I mean, adding to the 535 is really not a massive undertaking, correct?
It depends on which format you go through.
I strongly, yeah, I strongly recommend the applicant, the township, and DEP, contact Scott Novatnik, you all get together and sit down, because the sewage, if it's not in the public sewer area, it's a process, and it could go through the township, and then DEP denies it, and you go back and forth, so really, from the beginning, and the township has to be involved too, because I believe we want the public sewer, so you all have to get together and...
The real key is how it was designated in that 1995 plan, that's really the key. That will determine how much needs to be done and which...
Sounds like you had it in there, but then some came out.
I forget how it was put in there, but it was kind of, the whole corner was identified.
Get DEP involved from the beginning, because the township may say one thing, and then you go along for six, seven months, and then DEP says something else, so we would like the public sewer, so.
Again, unless something was changed in the last six months, that is not in the sewer district in my understanding and my research. So, process, it is a process, so, but we're, I think we're willing to do that, because it's definitely, we prefer public sewer rather than on-lot. Other questions while I think of what else I want to...
Yes, Lot One, there's a question. It's not really indicated what's proposed on Lot One in Tract One or Tract Three?
Tract Three. Yeah, that's a, that's a single lot right at the intersection. It's about 1.1 acres, it's zoned rural residential. So at this point, if there's nothing, it's just probably going to be one lot, because it's just below over an acre, and it's not zoned for anything of that. So there, at this point, it's just the single lot, and again, it's north of the road, so we don't have...
I know previously, you did, a few years ago, the sketch that was pulled had, I believe, a TND, and it had a little retail. I, you know, and this is just my opinion, we have, you know, over 300 residential units, and the Vista's well over 200 at Blue Barn Meadows, but everyone's driving to Cedar Crest, you know, the Target, you know, we have Biagio's for pizza there, which, and there's going to be more traffic on Cedar Crest with some other developments, so everyone's driving towards that way. You know, has it, any thought, has there been any thought about, you know, little retail? Nothing extensive, because I don't think the, you know, these aren't major thorough fears that would attract major retail, but, you know, a couple small retail shops.
I don't think the current zoning would allow.
No, we had, my understanding, we had to, we had to go into the TND to have that, and we tried multiple layouts, and we met with staff a number of times with that, and even though the southeast, and it would only be on, really, on southeast or the southwest sites, because of the zoning, and southwest is, it's split zoning rural residential, it's just not a good site. Southeast, you can see the shape of it and the wetlands and such, to lay out a TND the way, you know, again, we met with the staff, and it's just, does not work with this shaped property well. And so at that point, where we backed off and decided to go by right.
What are your thoughts on sidewalks throughout the project?
Depends on your thoughts on sidewalks.
Well, historically, the last five years...
So our thoughts on sidewalks is, we understand people are going to walk, and we, you know, personally, I'd say go on one side of the road, and if it's a requirement for both sides, that's what we do. What we're looking for on the, we do have a layout, or a road width cross-section there, and there's some comments about it here. So understanding the, what we're proposing with the thinner, narrower, 28-foot cartway, 14 on both sides, is north, and the cul-de-sac in the lower left-hand side, because the lots are bigger and people can park on their lots. On the lower right corner, the southeast corner, we have it that it's going to be 36-foot cartway, full width, parking on both sides. So as far as sidewalks go, if we're required to put them in, we'll put them in.
My concern is how the residents on the east side of Blue Barn and on the south side, well, basically on the east side, are going to get to the park at Vista's. Because you're not showing any real recreational opportunities. You do have some prime open space, but the soccer fields are a magnet, and people are going to want to walk there, and walking across Blue Barn at that section, I think sidewalks are, at a minimum, are going to be required, and then we really need to look at globally. I know there are some deferred sidewalks along Chapman's to get to that park, and then there is a park plan in fruition, so we need to look at that globally as well.
We, again, would be getting an HOP for that whole intersection, and we can address at least crossing the intersection and get sidewalks to it somehow.
Question for you, Charlie, is there a declaration in terms of the type of homes on each of these tracks?
No, I don't believe so.
But there could be, there could be twins.
No, 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 they're singles.
These are exclusively 100% on every track.
Yes, these are all, these are all singles. Yes, these are all, these are all singles. Pardon?
Well, in, in terms of the RR zoning district, it, do they have to be singles?
Yeah.
So yeah, zoning requires in the RR for the lots to be singles.
I think one acre lot.
So those are the two, the lots to the north of Chapman's.
I had a, a question. Um, on the south side of Chapman's towards the east. There's like a little pole portion like of a flag lot. Yep. I understand that's a shared driveway for those existing homes. What, I guess what the question is, what are you proposing to do that? And are you proposing to allow those homeowners to continue to use that for access to their homes?
I, I don't see why not. He's going out there. I, I, we don't know. Um, yeah, we don't have the water laid out. We may have to, where the, there is water on Chapman. And we may have to use it a little bit, but I don't know of any reason. Not let it continue, but it's not my property.
Unless something funky happens with another access, it may just be. Outside of the use of those. Or utilities.
Correct.
Um, so anyone on the board here have any other questions or comments?
There, there was one question under about the, a restriction in the deed. And that is being the, the previous owner is okay with the subdivision and any documentation will be presented to the, to the township to acknowledge that that has been addressed.
That deed portion would have to be revised and I guess re-recorded.
Greg, there's, it's the overlay in that area, only the south of Chapman's.
Yes, it's only to the south because of having the public water.
Right, right.
And public sewer as a requirement. And I believe it's only the southeast. I don't believe it went over to the southwest corner across the street. Believe it's.
Yeah, I think it is.
Does anyone on the planning commission have any other?
I just, one comment with the.
Okay.
Yeah, with, with the open space that is proposed, a lot of that is existing wetland, forested wetlands. So.
Yeah.
I would just watch that some of that might have to be adjusted to be more prime. Than what is as existing, because as existing, it's undevelopable.
That's fine. And our, our open space calculations are way over what's required by ordinance. So we, we will fine tune that. Based off of information tonight, knowing that, okay, the concept is okay, the types of uses are okay. And then we can fine tune that. We'll also have to work out like the driveway or the road on um, Blue Barn south of the intersection. You know, that'll change acreages a little bit and things. Move that driveway to the southern tract.
And, and typically, um, I believe the, you know, in terms of basins and whatnot. I don't think the township's going to want to take them over. So they would probably remain privately owned by the HOA.
We may ask. That's fine.
One more thing.
No, and they're not, even though they're shown blue, we're not planning on having open water basins. It's just.
Understood.
You know, um, so that, that's fine. And there, there was some comments in here that, you know, they aren't on individual lots. So we'll have to work all that out with.
There's no provision in the zoning that if water and sewer become available in the RR district, that it's, the lots allowed to get any smaller than one acre? I don't believe so. In some districts, when you have both utilities available, you can reduce that.
I don't remember it being that.
Yeah, if, if it's greater density, a district like an R2, R3, 4, 5. Yeah, if, if there is no water or sewer available, then the lot size has to be an acre.
Yep.
But if you have it, then it drops down to what is the base zoning. Yeah, it does. I don't believe it works the other way. RR, RR2 and RR3.
Yeah, I guess it is what it is.
Yep.
Yeah, just so, so we're clear for everyone online and in the audience, north of Chapman's is RR. And they're one acre lots. And single family homes and zoning does not allow the deviate from that really.
Correct.
Is the existing dwelling with the barn intended to stay or is that going to be gone?
It's currently shown on its own lot. So I.
Right. I saw that it's.
Yeah. So the house um, is going to stay and the barn may need to be raised.
Right. Cause the, right now the road goes through the barn.
Correct. And there's a number of sheds and other outbuildings.
There's a possibility to save the barn. I'm a big fan of barns and you're on Blue Barn Road. So I'm just saying. We've lost enough barns in this township over the years. My opinion.
Does anyone on the planning commission have any other comments? Um, do we want to check with? I'll ask something quick, if you don't mind. Um, we're, we're a little ways out, but do you see this as a staged construction on each tract or all at once?
We haven't talked about it personally as engineer. I think it's going to be somewhat staged. Um, but like phases. It'll be determined.
I had one question. This is Brian Kelly. I was going to ask the applicant, um, if you could discuss the proposed realignment of Chapman's and Blue Barn and also to a comment that came from our community development department to consider a roundabout at Chapman's and Blue Barn. Is that anything that has been discussed at this point?
Um, we, we saw the comment and at this point we feel what we are proposing just to, to definitely line up vertically and horizontally, the intersection and a four-way stop. We feel that adequately will address the traffic in the area. So we have not looked into any roundabout in that area.
And ultimately it might come down to PennDOT anyway.
And it definitely.
You can't do it in order not to do it.
Right. It definitely got to come down to PennDOT. Um, as I believe Mr. Wilson said, that township needs to, will have to be involved with those PennDOT meetings or should be, you know, will at least be invited to those PennDOT meetings. So.
Yeah. And I, I do recommend, you know, with the scoping meeting with PennDOT, uh, you know, keep the township in the loop.
Yeah.
So everyone's on the same page. Um, like it was mentioned, these are state roads. So PennDOT has the ultimate final say with things. Could you go over in terms, I know when the Blue Barn Meadow project uh, was constructed, they widened the road, which made it so much better during the winter months for plowing and whatnot. Can you, can you go over um, how much wider the roads are going to be compared to the condition now?
You mean Blue Barn and Chapman?
Yes.
Uh, I, I can't.
Okay.
I, I mean, at this point, we're um.
Early stages.
I, I will tell you, they're going to be wider than they are now because the standard regulations now, there's going to be bigger shoulders. There's going to be wider travel lane. I don't believe we're looking for turn lanes at that intersection. Again, that's all needs to be worked out with PennDOT. So the condition will be a lot better than it is now with bare minimum being done, if that is. It's, and especially with the alignment. Um, but I, I don't know how wide that is. That also can be our staff or engineer, whoever be involved with that during PennDOT.
All right. Anyone else on the planning commission? All right. Well, I do thank you for putting us, oh, yep. I do thank you for providing the, the sketch plan and giving us and the public soon to provide comments. I know a lot of developers go right into preliminary and don't give us the opportunity to um, have input. Um, so now um, courtesy of the floor. If anyone in the audience has any comments or questions, just come up to the podium, state your name. And um, you're free to um, provide your input. We encourage it.
Are we on? Yep. Okay.
Be nice on your.
Kevin Campbell at 5073 Chapman's Road. And I have a concern about water. Has there been any calculations for water for the impervious surfaces?
Stormwater or?
Probably getting ahead of myself because it's a site plan. But you were talking about dumping all the water off a track four into the, into the wetlands, which is basically my backyard. And I do have current water issues.
Okay.
There's the lights on. Okay. Gotcha. I was turning it back off. Modern technology. Um, so when I, I didn't mean to reference dumping the water. Every, because of county conservation district and the township regulations, uh, we now must infiltrate or address a, a good amount of stormwater before it runs off. Um, and that will all be addressed. So yes, it's too early, first of all.
Okay.
But um, we're definitely. When we get here, we'll be in front of planning commission for a while and.
And Wetlands Conservancy or any other organizations get involved with that?
No. Well, I mean, there, we have.
Are these deemed wetlands or you just said?
Yeah, no, no, they're, they're wetlands. And we actually had um, the Army Corps out for a jurisdiction determination to verify that to either agree or disagree. And you know, so we have the report that was approved by the Army Corps already on where the wetlands, what are wetlands and what are not.
And they are.
Oh yeah, definitely. Yeah. That, all that blue area up there, definitely wetlands.
I agree.
But, and then as far as stormwater goes, yes, we need to design that yet.
Okay.
Calculate a little better with amount of uh, the typical house layout, driveway layout, curb, sidewalk, all of that that goes with it.
And there's a concern across the street from me as well. When it rains coming out of what's now a field, which is going to be all of the uh, this is all of track five. There's actually a stream that runs between the properties and across the street.
Okay.
So there's enormous amount of water that flows through there now.
Hmm.
And with more impervious surface in here, I would think it's only going to increase. And, and at this point, I'm, I'm just.
It's not true. It actually, it actually reduces the amount of free flow of waters across a field. And I'll give you an example, I'll give you an example of, of the same developer developed the hills of Winchester here, which free flowed down a hill through a field on Walbert Avenue and blew out people's driveways across the street. And after construction, post-development, there's less water on Walbert Avenue now than there ever has been.
Yeah. And.
Uh, because it's directed into ponds.
Correct.
And infiltration pits and so forth.
Yeah, if I, if I may.
Okay. And, and I would expect that, but I just wanted to express that concern.
Yeah. So instead of flowing and I'll, no one could see what I'm, I'm just pointing, instead of flowing from the south to the north across that whole southwest corner or southeast corner.
Yes.
It will get intercepted by roads and directed to basins, which then are, that are regulating discharge. So um, some going into the ground, water still flows downhill, but that, that uh, stream or.
And there is some flow here that comes underneath the road and quite a bit of it that does feed the wetlands as well.
Oh, sure.
And, and we want, to cut that off could negatively affect them.
We will.
Yeah.
And, and then just, just wanted to make sure there's consideration.
Yeah, we will not be able to cut off the flow from the wetlands and send it somewhere else. But they'll, DEP will make sure of that.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll say over the years, um, stormwater requirements have become a lot more strict.
Yes.
So what you'll see now is um, you know, even just, you know, 15 to 20 years ago. Stormwater requirements were less strict than they are now. So when a, a project comes in, because of those strict requirements, you, you see a lot of issues from the past getting fixed. Um, it's heavily regulated. There's the township regulations. There's county act 167 regulations. And then there's PA DEP stormwater permit regulations. So there's three layers of
A lot going on now.
Regulatory agencies that will be reviewing this in depth. And then also the DEP reviews the wetlands as well. And it could Army Corps as well, depending if it's jurisdictional. So not only the township will be reviewing it, but the county and DEP.
It's a whole different process.
It's a lot more strict now. And you see nowadays, um, a lot of times, uh, some of the stormwater issues of the past can get fixed.
Just curiosity, is there a, a amount, percentage of impervious surface allowed?
Yes.
Per, in the township, what is that?
Well, I mean, it depends as a whole. And then on a per lot basis going forward, there's an amount per lot that's allowed. It's in our uh, zoning. But the general rule of thumb is post-development, the developer is really not allowed to let any more water leave that site than what it was pre-development.
Okay.
If you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So how much they increase the impervious and increased storm, they're supposed to capture that. So what, what's, what's going here before those houses has to be the same as when the house, after the houses.
Okay. And there's a lot of people governing that.
A lot of people.
A lot of people, yes.
And there's a, a lot of soil investigation too, where they have to dig test pits and do stormwater infiltration testing. The township's going to review that. The county conservation district's going to review that. So there's a lot of layers of protection in there to to make sure that there aren't stormwater problems.
And where would I find the allowable impervious?
South Whitehall has a fantastic website, the zoning portal. Just Google South Whitehall zoning portal. It'll take you to it. You go to your region, you click your zone, you go into that zone, keep reading it, it'll tell you all kinds of.
Okay. All right.
Greg, could you actually maybe exchange contact info and let them know what the impervious, max allowable impervious coverage per lot is?
It's probably right here on our.
They don't have the plans though. So.
Well, the plans are on our website.
Oh, oh, that, that's true. That's true.
Yeah, it's on the website.
Yeah, just shoot me an email or, or give me a call.
Okay. Yeah, it's a curiosity question. I, I installed the infiltration pits and deal with that.
All right.
And so forth. I just didn't, I'm just curious what the impervious allotment was. But like he, like he said, it's uh, different based on the zoning.
Yes, and sized lot.
Lot.
Yeah. It's a graduated scale.
Or you can just come over here and see the table yourself.
There you go.
Very much.
Thank you.
There anyone else? Evening.
Sabora A. Gambler, 1576 Blue Barn Road. Couple concerns. The first concern, obviously, and we spoke of, is traffic. A lot of truck traffic. So the concern is, as we alluded to, on Chapman and Blue Barn driveways, roads coming out of developments. The Pasaco development that will eventually come to light is talking about connecting those two. That is very important for us because we live across the street from the Pasaco property now. You cannot put two exit roads on Blue Barn to service both those developments. They need to be connected. That's one thing. The second thing is this gentleman alluded to, that these will stay single homes. There's a lot of homes there. We're here 21 years. There's a lot of homes there now. The traffic on Blue Barn, Chapman, you know, the size of those roads. They don't hold. They don't hold that traffic now. This is not bad. We were hearing years ago about putting twins, other amounts of homes being there. This to us, especially behind us, is not bad. But how guaranteed are we that if Mr. Jandal does not develop this and sells this to somebody else, will these plans change?
There's no guarantee.
No, there isn't.
Of course not. No. He'd be free to sell it and someone else would be free to try it.
So that, that person would come to you as the planning committee, present their plans, and then you would approve it based on?
If the, if the approval was for the single homes and that was recorded, if they changed it to twins or townhomes, et cetera, that's a major change that would have to go back to planning.
Okay.
You have to start. Her question was if, if the developer decides not to do this and decides to sell the land, that someone else could. But look, there's zoning in place, so he can only do what the zoning will allow.
Okay.
So singles to the north of.
I live on the southwest.
Anything to the north is going to be singles. Anything to the south might have some density based on water and sewer availability.
Okay.
But there's no guarantee that if Mr. Jandal doesn't develop this and decides to sell it to Passaco next door or to another developer who's already on that road.
Because that has happened.
But whatever is proposed before they can build it, they will have to come here and publicly present it. Whatever is proposed, and if they change things, they will have to come back here and present it. This is a sketch plan, so it's the very early first stage. And we see it all the time. There's so many changes from sketch plans. It's too early to tell a lot of it.
I can almost guarantee you this plan will not look the same in a year.
Okay.
There, there will be slight changes.
And what kind of timeframe are we talking to do all this? Five years, ten, what?
If we would start today, it would take at least a year to get the permits. And with PennDOT involved, it could take. I, I could be retired by then, so.
I am retired. On the southwest corner, it's proposed to leave it as not public water and sewer? Did I understand that correctly?
The southwest corner.
Which is Track Four.
With, yeah, no, that will be public water and sewer.
It will be.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Because there's a high water table there.
Okay.
Reason being is the Portland Cement Company used to operate in this area. They used to pump a lot of millions of gallons of water a day. Since they stopped many, many years ago, the water tables have risen. So the property there sits here and we sit up here. How is that going to impact all my sump pumps, my water drainage from my roof going into those properties? Are you taking that into consideration?
We will, we'll have to look at all the grading for, I'm assuming you might have, be the one property right there?
Um, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, we, we can't touch your property without your permission. So the site would need, the adjoining property would need to take in, we'd have to take into account all the grading of the adjoining property.
Okay.
And make sure we're not trapping water that would flow across your property, like we can't build a berm that stops it on your property, or we can't direct that other water onto your property.
But you're saying your water goes onto their property?
Yep. My sump pumps and my, from the roof drainage goes into your property?
Well, if it, if the hose is across the property line, we may do something about that, but I mean, it's, I don't know how much water you're talking about, but.
Well, it's a high water table, so it gets pumped.
Yeah.
When, you know, when we get a lot of rain.
They'll have to do soils investigations where they do soils testing and they'll dig soil probes and whatnot, and that will actually give them the real situation and real up-to-date data. And then they'll have to base their design on that.
And one last thing. Years and years ago, when this was proposed to be planned, there was the sale of the property included Mrs. Howes, not allowing any development until she passed away. I understand that has been addressed through Mrs. Howes, and she's agreed to allow development?
Yes, and what, and any, any document that the township needs to, to be comfortable with that will be presented before any construction starts. You know, any approvals or the plan would be recorded or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'm Dennis Reed, 5052 Chapman's Road, just north of the, furthest pond to the east. Now, when it, when it rains real hard, again, water, basically, we got a swell on both sides of, of my place, and it's like river. So I'm assuming those retention ponds are going to take care of everything and some kind of stand pipes in there with controlled releases, I assume?
Yeah, you're correct. And we, we honestly don't know where the discharge, discharges are.
That's fine. And it goes under the road to, to the east of my place. You talked about water and, well, sewer basically is what I'm looking at. That whole Development Five or Track Five, it's going to be public sewer.
Correct.
What are the chances of the people on Chapman's Road getting public sewer? I mean, I don't know the, I don't know the, does the route go down, down through that, the, the wetlands and under, under Cedar Crest and to that?
It actually goes to the west. It goes, it heads to the west out Chapman's. Yeah.
Okay. I know that, but there's another sewage plant down and, and over, off, off Cedar Crest, I think.
Yeah, that, everything north of the Purple Road or the Pink Road is not allowed to have public sewer at this point, or not in the sewer district it's called. So it's not public.
It couldn't even have a, a main route going down through that way because of being able to get under the turnpike and, and over to that other.
That would have to be approved by the township.
But you, you're on the south side, right?
I'm on the south.
You butt right up next to that.
Right, I'm on the other side of that pond, right?
I think the developer would be open to working with you to, to put a lateral up to your property if you certainly want to be sewer.
But it's, still, it's uphill.
Yeah, you may have, would have to pump, put in a grinder pump.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you'd have to work with them, and there's something that you're going to have to be responsible for, some stuff they'd be responsible for, but I don't think that'd be out of the question. That's certainly something you want to do.
That's true.
I'd like to get off a septic system if I had the opportunity to.
Really?
I, I'd recommend to exchange, if you wish, to exchange information with Charlie. He's their engineer, and you can get in touch with each other and coordinate as needed.
Okay, I'll talk to Charlie then. Okay. All right, no, thank you.
Please come up.
Passaco 1898 Blue Barn Road. What, what, what are you doing north of Chapman's as far as storage? I know you probably said it, but I missed it. Pardon? Okay. How are you providing it for the 45 units that are going into that lot?
It's all proposed as own lot.
Those are septic systems.
Okay, I thought you.
We, yeah, the, the town, town, Public Works would prefer that to be public sewer. It's a very long and involved process with the township and D E P to get the approvals for public sewer.
Okay, but they're not, my understanding is it has to be an acre lot. These are 9,000 square foot lots.
No, that's, no, that's the southeast corner, sir.
Pardon?
Track Two.
No, no, I'm talking, I'm talking the track north of Chapman's and east of Blue Barn.
Yeah, that is.
There's 45 units are going in.
No, there's 17, sir.
North I was wrong. Wait a minute, let me pull my.
Yeah.
Track Two. On Track Two.
Okay, Track Two, we have 17 lots.
Yep.
And they're all away here.
Okay, Track, Track Two, my understanding was, it was, what would that be? East, southeast? It's northeast.
Where the, the existing house was, the house home.
So we're, in other words, I have those switched. Okay. All right, then, then the 17 lots will be north of Blue Barn. Okay. One other question was about, trying to think back four or five years ago, Mr. Jandal was going to develop the property where they have the heavy slope on it.
Track One.
Right, my understanding was that the water pressure out in that area was not adequate. Has, has the water pressure problem been taken care of?
I, we do not know. That's something they'll be responsible to take care of. And if I do recall, there's adequate supply, but you, you might be right, there's not enough volume. And if that's the case, they'll be responsible to upgrade the system. And that would generally be a benefit to the township if anyone else is using public water.
Okay.
They would be responsible for that.
One other thing, Commissioner Height adjusted this, was the, the water that does flow down Blue Barn Road. And it's a situation where with nothing there now, it's, it's bad. So, you know, like you say, if it's, it's a possibility to have that fixed while they're developing this would, would be great. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey. Um, ma'am, you could come to the podium.
Hi, I'm Ray Del Sarsky. I live at 2027 Blue Barn Road. Has anybody done a study on the traffic? How much more traffic is going to be on the road? I'm almost like a prisoner in my house. I live over the hill, the steep hill. My driveway goes around my house. There's certain times of, times of the day I can't leave.
The township has traffic study requirements. PennDOT has traffic study requirements, absolutely.
Okay, because I did a study myself the other day. It was on Tuesday. And would you believe at the intersection of Blue Barn and Snowdrift Road, in two hours, 936 cars passed through that intersection. And Blue Barn from Grams, for some reason, down to Snowdrift is 40 miles per hour coming down that steep hill. I can't get out of my driveway. I now have to make appointments at certain times of the day because of the traffic. I absolutely can't get up, let alone try and get across the street to get my mail. They won't allow us to put our mailbox on the other side because it's unsafe for the mail person. I can't get across the street to even get my own mail. I feel like I'm a prisoner. And now adding all these brand new homes, and I know we have to look forward to the future. I've lived out there for 55 years. And it's terrible to have to really be a prisoner in your own home and have to make your appointments according to the traffic. And we also have tractor trailers going up and down the road all the time. All right, I said my piece. Thank you.
I, I will say these are PennDOT roads, so.
That section is a township road.
North of Chapman's, you are right.
And it, it actually does have a truck restriction that the trucks go right through. Unfortunately, that road becomes the bypass for 309.
Paul, you could, do you have a comment?
Good evening, Paul McNamara. I actually live in Green Hills, but I drive through the intersection of Blue Barn and Chapman's basically daily several times. So if I could, I'd like to just offer some comments on the proposed redesign of that intersection. I agree that, you know, shifting the Chapman's Road southward would help with the offset of the intersection, but I don't think it would do anything to alleviate the queuing issues that are at the intersection. On my way over here this evening, it was like, you know, five minutes to seven, and there were six cars queued on Blue Barn stop sign. Certainly, it won't, it most likely won't meet the warrants for a light, but I believe that if you strongly encourage PennDOT to install a roundabout here, that would alleviate the queuing you see, especially at peak times in the morning when you see the school buses stacked up each ways and you have cars each way. No matter what you do there, as the previous lady indicated, you know, unfortunately, coming out of Upper McConge with the truck stop down there and truckers just using their GPS, you know, they come up here and there's a, there's a right turn that they make to go out to the light over near Alpo. So whether it's a roundabout or whether it remains a conventional intersection, I'd ask that you consider truck movements on that right turning movement to just help get them through that intersection. Other than that, thank you for your time.
Could I get your address?
Yes, sir. 1524 Russett Road.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I'll, I'll say, you know, in terms of the PennDOT traffic scoping meeting, please make sure township staff and engineering are coordinated and they're included in the communication and invited to attend. And I'm sure you're all taking notes of everyone's input and we'll speak to it.
Yeah, we're, we're very concerned about what's going to happen out there. We know that there are problems now, not just with traffic, but with some stormwater issues. And between the township and PennDOT, we're going to be looking very clear, carefully at these roads and that intersection and the proximity of the proposed in, new intersections to the existing intersection. So the township has the process in place to go through and really look at this. And with the current design requirements for those two roads, we should be able to work with PennDOT pretty well to get some improvements out there.
All right, is there anyone else sitting in the audience? Please come up.
The answer that township might, might take over that, that road at all? I mean, it's, it's the, I mean, I've gone on 20 years there now, and it's the last road almost that gets plowed in the winter time. You get freezing rain. We had cars all over that road coming out of church when it had freezing rain from, from St. Joe's and stuff. I mean, it's, and I know PennDOT takes care of the highways and stuff first, and that's like the last little piece that they're kind of worried about. So I don't know.
It doesn't happen often.
There's any plans for that or not?
Township takes over state roads. The state takes over town.
And is it just Chapman's from Blue Barn to 309 that's state road, or does it go out?
It's at Blue Barn from Tillman to Chapman's, and then it turns.
It's just that right?
It's actually, it's, it's the same state route, which is 4,002 or 4,001, but it changes direction. So it's one of those convoluted roads that the state has, so.
I know when I did the, the truck studies here for the, the storage buildings and things like that, and I mean, I've sat behind trucks where maybe one or two trucks get out on the 309 from Chapman's. So I'm not sure up to date their traffic studies are, because when you're sitting behind them, they don't, they don't move very quick.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Please come to the podium.
Yeah, hi, I'm Kevin O'Brien. I live at 5060 Chapman's Road. And I just had a question about, a question that was posed tonight about whether to allow permission for an access road between two properties coming up from Chapman's to be able to still be used. I was wondering what was behind that question?
Yeah, so Greg, if you could show the, you know, like the pole portion of the flag lot, it, it's a skinny, narrow piece of property that the, the Jandals own, but no, it's east. Oh, yeah, we'll get it on the, the screen, but it, it's a portion of land that the Jandals own, but adjacent properties owners use it to get access on to Chapman's Road. But we'll, we'll show it. It's a little skinny. It's a little skinny, narrow. So we don't want those existing homeowners to lose access. Okay, all right.
How I get to my house? So I.
Yes.
Did you have, did you have a written easement? What's that? Did you have a written easement? I believe so. Be worth looking into it if you did. I don't have, I don't see things continue the way they are. If you have. It's only 33 feet wide. So I mean, I don't know what, I think it was a common easement up to the field, so. But when we spoke with Mr. Howells, he said it was our, it was our road, so. There's two homes.
Yeah, and, and there's some, oh, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to get into, into the legalities, but I, I do recommend you exchange and contact the information with the engineer to discuss that. But there are, I believe, some legalities where if you've been using it for 21 plus years, you may have, have rights to still use it. But I'm, I'm hoping the property owner can work with you.
Okay.
All right, is there anyone else? All right, well, is there anyone online?
Brian H., I see you have your hand raised. I can unmute you.
Yes, Brian Hardner, 1829 Majestic Drive. Just two quick questions about track one development. There is a mature tree line on the western border of track one. Would the intentions be for that to remain?
So that's the, the track that's in the upper northwest corner?
Yep.
Yep, next to Vista Drive?
Correct.
Yeah, so the, the track that, I'm assuming the, the tree row is probably pretty much close to the property line between, yeah, so it would remain. There would be, A, I don't think we could take it all down if it's on the townhouse project. And I don't see any reason to take it down. The, the roads would be fronting down on Blue Barn Road and that would be up on the upper tier of the lots all the way in the back. So I, I don't see any reason we would be taking it down.
And then the second question is about the houses fronting, fronting the Blue Barn. Or is it, is the intention that the development or the construction of those homes will be basically that close to Blue Barn or is there potential for the homes to move to the back of the lots?
Now, they may move back further. As I spoke earlier, the, the general slope of that side is 12 to 15, 16%. So it depends on the type of house and maximum driveway slopes and such that we just showed them at this building setback line at this point, but they, they could be pushed back further. They'd have to do perk testing for septic and everything else, so it's unknown at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Is there anyone else online? Just to double check, anyone sitting in the audience? Here's your last opportunity. All right, so as I stated earlier, this is a sketch plan, so no formal or official recommendations are made. We just provide our, our input and they'll go back to the drawing board and take our suggestions. Now we'll move on to agenda item number five, zoning ordinance amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad to see we have members of the audience still interested in this. This is a staff, staff proposed ordinance amendment amending section 35042H height exceptions. This has been to the planning commission at least twice. So you guys are aware of what's going on. For the audience's sake, this is to clarify the language within the section. There was a recent zoning appeal on the language and basically that came out to say the zoning hearing board suggested we clarify the language quickly. So that's what this is all about. As we talked last time, the basis of this is the 40% additional height for certain appurtenances that would go on the roof of a, a structure or building. You're generally looking at like antennas, elevator towers, that sort of thing. The ordinance, basically the intent is that that can exceed the height of the district by 40%. The language that is ambiguous is the 140%. There was a question as to whether that's measured from grade or from the roof. We believe that the intent was always from grade. So this was basically to state that much more clearly. At the last meeting, you basically liked where we were at, at that point. There was a suggestion that you would increase the setbacks for impertinent, the appurtenances for uses that are of a separate category. So for example, if you had an institutional use that wanted to put an appurtenance on their roof to exceed, you know, the, the required height by 40%, then that should get a double setback for anything that wasn't an institutional use there. For example, a residence. That was added in there. And of course, while I was adding that in there, a thought occurred to me that there are situations in which a structure has a property line between it, typically a twin, but you might see it somewhere else. So in that case, since there are requirements here based on the size of the appurtenance allowed on the roof, based on the, I believe it's 25% of the width or 25% of the depth, one of the things I wanted to do was make sure that if it were a twin, for example, the owner of one side couldn't utilize the allotment for his neighbor. Therefore, using all of that on his side and depriving the neighbor of the possibility of putting an appurtenance there. So I simply said, okay, then any appurtenance, the size requirements are only applied to on the side of the property land that the appurtenance is. So those were the two changes since last time. So that's what you see before you. You can see on page 45 of your packet what the changes were, both prior and since last month. And then obviously on page 47 is the clean version. So we're here looking for a recommendation for the Board of Commissioners. I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
We've gone over this first for numerous months now. I, I don't have any, any comments. Does anyone else on the planning commission have any comments?
Comments or questions?
No. Does anyone in the audience have any comments or questions? All right, I, I think we, everything was worked out based on our numerous months of discussion on, on this item. Does anyone want to make a recommendation or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Or recommend to the Board of Commissioners.
Any further comments or anyone have, anyone online? All right.
Got a motion in a second. Roll call vote. Trevor Donbach.
Aye.
Tim Dugan.
Aye.
Andrew Flag.
Aye.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Diane Kelly.
Aye.
And Mark Luth.
Aye.
And David Wilson.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, agenda item number six, transportation infrastructure update. Typically township engineer, Pittcock does that, so they're not here tonight, so we'll move on to agenda item number seven, courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone sitting in the audience or anyone online that has any additional comments? We welcome you to, um, come to the podium and speak your mind. Is there anyone online? No? All right, agenda number eight, adjournment. Oh, sorry.
Just wanted to say the next month we have a slightly more full agenda. Ridge Farm 1B will be back. We have a small parking lot expansion for the Allentown Cat Clinic on Tillman. 1429 Eck Road Outdoor Storage will return with a preliminary final plan. And I believe Mr. Lapsansky, who was here at the last meeting, I'm anticipating that he will bring back his rezoning request. That's not guaranteed yet, but I'm anticipating.
Yes, please come to the podium. Otherwise people may not be able to hear, hear you.
Nelson Randolph, 5032 Snowdrift Road, flash Blue Barn. I was here for Mr. Leponski's. I didn't get the memo that it was canceled. I got this.
Right. My apologies, it wasn't the website. Yeah, never, it never even made the agenda, to be honest. He pulled it fairly, fairly early in the process, right after those were sent out.
Right after. This is fairly recent.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that, those were sent about three weeks ago.
Okay, well, make sure you send me the update.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? Is there anyone on, online? No? All right, agenda item number eight, adjournment.
Motion.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it.